I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, against our paths here.
You almost missed it. Okay, first thing is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any questions or concerns on the agenda? The only thing I want to note in the consent agenda when we talk about commission appointments, I will do the recommendation in January, but I want everyone to look at the current ones, and I know Jenna's on one and Maggie's not on any, but we have to, you know, if everyone's happy with what they have.
I'm going to do it now.
Well, I know, but the representative is you right now.
Oh.
But, you know, like planning commission, we got, you know, Jenna's down there, and I just have to check with Amy if she still wants to be on it. That's really what's, I'm not making the recommendation to the board of the commission until the first week in January, but that's why this is in the package, is to kind of let everyone take a look at it and see if that's, if anyone wants something to do different or if everyone's fine with what we've got. Okay, any other questions or concerns on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I got a motion by Dave Brusick, second by Sean Ryan to approve the agenda. Any other questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. First thing is, Chris, are you taking this, or Ken, are you going to do a little introduction?
I'm taking number one, and that'll kind of lead into Chris's item on number two here, so.
Okay.
Before we let Chris do work on number two, we'll approve his contract.
On number one.
On number one. All right, so if you take a look at the map that we have on the overhead here, this represents our municipal state aid road system. So once New Prague hit, 5,000 persons, we became a designated state aid city, and it basically allows us to collect funds from highway users' tax distributions on the gas tax, so we can maintain our roads and get some construction dollars for those state aid routes that are within the city. All the routes that are in your packet, you can see this, well, on the overhead everything, it's kind of highlighted in pink, would be a local or municipal state aid route, and we last suggested these in early 2016, I think, roughly, and pending what we'll talk about in the next discussion on item number two for County Road 37, we'll probably have some other changes that we'll make. But anyway, the contracts, or the funds require that we have a engineer, a qualified engineer, do our annual work on the stated routes, so we have different paperwork and things that need to be filed every year. And we've had SEH do this for the city of New Prague, going back to mid-2009, and I stood a quick rundown of all the contract amounts going back a few years, and essentially from last year's contract, we are only up $350 increase, which is very reasonable if you look back over the past few years, we've actually kind of been up and down in different years as you go back. So we're actually only $100 more for 2018 than we were in 2013, so those are for the routine services. All these funds we get from the state aid dollars, we actually can use our maintenance funds to pay for the engineering services required through the program, so we really don't have general tax dollars going into this contract. But again, we do recommend to have SEH continue on as our 2018 state aid engineer at the $6,600 proposed amount of the contract dated December 13, 2017. So we'll get into a little more details on the state aid program as we talk about County Road 37 the next agenda, but this will carry us through the next year.
Chris, question for you, is, are we limited in how many miles that we can have as state aid roads?
Yeah, that's a great question. The way it works in the calculation is you sum up all the local streets, all the local miles, so basically all those streets in black, and you take 20% of that mileage, what you call it, and that's where you can designate it as the state aid route. So all the roads in pink are basically 20% of all our total mileage. And then there's a calculation where a part of your portionment is given by population, and part of it is based on what they call, it's a needs calculation, what would it cost to bring your entire system into current standards, and what would it cost to do that? So in this needs calculation, they, through all the cities, they apportion out the funds. There is a pamphlet that you have up there, and I'm going to get into the detail of it. They hand it, they send it out to me every year, so I thought I might as well give it to you, but it basically talks about the highway users' tax distribution, so it's their gas tax, and a portion of that, so 9%, is actually divvied up to all the cities of the population 5,000 or greater. And then again, through these calculations of population versus need, they determine some apportionment to all those cities. So yes, there is a limit on how many miles we can designate. Again, we're literally maxed out at this point. Until we have more miles that we can designate, we can't define any more streets as state aid routes.
So what I hear you saying, so if the city grows and we add more streets, then obviously our 20% would increase, and we could dedicate more to the state aid roads?
Yep, example, somebody builds a mile road, local road, we can designate now two tenths of somewhere in the city as another state aid route and start collecting money on that.
And it's our call on what streets we can designate?
Yeah, there's some certain stipulations, they have to be roads that either end at a trunk highway or a county state aid highway or another state aid route, so there's certain stipulations. Again, they have to be roads of somewhat significance, you know, we'll call our minor collectors, sort of more as access rather than, you know, just a local road.
Okay. Any other questions for Ken or Chris? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve SEH and Chris Cavett as our engineer on the state aid project. Second. Second by Dave Brusick. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Next one, County Roads 37.
Okay, I want to make sure you get one half of the seat and have something to do. Okay, actually, let's leave, go ahead and leave that map.
Wait, hold on.
You've got some.
This will be better?
Actually, we'll stick to this for a sec.
Sorry.
That's all right.
Click add.
And then I'll actually maybe bounce back to the other one. So I guess, as I noted in the memo, the purpose of this agenda report and resolution is basically what we call to concur with the county's request to what we call revoke or undesignate county road, it's actually county state aid highway 37. Similar to what we were referring to as the state aid routes, the counties have a similar program as well, where they have certain routes of regional significance that they can designate as county state aid highways, that they can utilize gas tax funding when they do improvements on those roads. This is one of those. And just to find the difference, there are county roads and there's county state aid highways, and county state aid highways are the ones that can receive outside funding from the gas tax. County roads are funded locally, with county taxes, property taxes only, or whatever funding sources they have locally. Long term, it is in the counties and the cities' plan to basically do a turnback in the future, where this will actually get turned back to the city. That's most likely not going to happen until next year or possibly even 2019, but at the current point, the state, or the county, I'm sorry, the county needs to designate county state aid miles somewhere else where they probably have more need and will get more funding, and it makes more sense for it to be designated as a state aid route than this location. So basically, what they're asking for us is, again, the city to concur or agree with, we agree that it does not need to be designated as a state aid route. They are planning to do improvements on the roadway, but they're not planning to use county state aid funding for it, they're planning to use little county, simple county funding to do roadway pavement improvements and curb, gutter improvements, repairs, and then basically a lot of repairs on the storm sewer. So from the city's standpoint, there's really no drawback, because this is still standard of the county's jurisdiction. They're still planning to make improvements to it, it's just a matter of what funding source they plan to do before it gets turned back to the city. Now, kind of to get back to your original question, Mayor, where you're asking, can we, will our system expand? Well, if this becomes a turnback, this actually becomes mile per mile, turnback becomes a state aid route. So immediately, once this comes onto the city's system, it'll come on as a county or municipal state aid street, and we will start collecting more need, we'll actually collect more revenue once it comes onto the system, and because it's improved, there shouldn't be any expenses related to it for long term, so we'll collect a lot more funding overall on that.
But does this, do we then eliminate some other state aid roads, because this is the 20% that's a pay?
Right, it goes on top. So we add, actually, 1.6 miles, we become added right on top, it's not counted as part of the 20% miles, and so it's actually a one-for-one addition to our state aid system, so.
In effect, it'd be added as a pink line on the map, in addition to what we have elsewhere.
Okay, so it doesn't affect any other of the ones that we've designated, even though it's, we're gaining 1.6, and we should only get 20% of that?
If it was a local road, it would only be 20%. In this case, it'll be at least one-to-one addition.
Okay.
There'll be some advantages, and again, it'll be improved before, you know, we'll be back to discuss this, we're in the process of discussion, discussing what a turnback agreement will be, what type of improvements are proposed, and that's still likely not to occur until 2018 or possibly even 2019. So all they're asking for now is the green light to remove that designation as a county state aid highway, so that they can go apply that designation somewhere else. This will become basically a county road, it's funded locally by the county, and again, they'll make improvements of it before it will be considered for a turnback. And again, the turnback process is pretty standard. This type of roadway really shouldn't be under the county's jurisdiction, this is really a local road, and because we're a state aid city, it fits well within the state aids program.
Okay. I have a question either for Ken or Chris. Is, like, First Avenue Southeast, was that, was that once, and now is a city street, or does that still belong to La Sura County?
It still belongs to La Sura County, we've been in discussions with them about a potential turnback in the future. The one thing is, they did improvements on that in the early 2000s, I believe, and under the rules, they have to wait 20 years before they turn it back or undesignate it, and otherwise, they've got to do some type of payback. So they're not too far off, they'll probably just wait till that 20 years expires, and then we'll be discussing a turnback, and that'll also involve definitely some improvements, definitely on that south end, and then maybe some minor improvements on the northerly part as well.
Okay.
Chris, we're not giving up any of our rights on this, are we? I mean, if for some reason, all of a sudden, last minute, the county doesn't do the improvements to the level or to the satisfaction of us.
But that's a different topic, right?
Well, yeah, and I can answer that. Again, it's still the county's road, and you have to approve the turnback. So there'll be a turnback agreement you'll need to consider in the future, and the things that are proposed, whether we're recommending or supporting those, and ultimately, you have the decision of whether they're allowed to do a turnback. Again, if push came to shove, I think ultimately, it would get turned back regardless, but again, we have the ability to negotiate that through your terms.
But the agreement we're talking about right now is basically just letting them change from a state aid road to just a regular county road.
Correct.
They still have all the maintenance and everything required on it.
Yeah, none of those changed, none of that changes.
Okay, anyone else have any other questions for Chris? I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution.
So move.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Dave Brusick, second by Maggie Bass. If there's no other questions or comments for Chris or Ken, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Ken, are you going to take the budget?
Yeah.
I suppose you changed it all since Mike wasn't here.
We'll keep it very simple, as Mike knows in this memo.
He's not going to be Skyped in at all?
No. You guys have looked at the budget at various times between August and November, we had our public hearing, truth of taxation hearing on December 4th, which kind of concluded the budget process, other than tonight, where we're taking a look at the final 2018 total budget, all funds totaling a little over $20 million. So what you've got in the summary is a general fund, proprietary funds, Mike, other than water, ice water and electric, and then also non-major proprietary funds, which include EDA, ambulance, industrial park, golf, and then stormwater utility as well. And then finally, special revenue, capital, projects, and debt service funds. So basically, in that summary, I believe there was a replacement page three handed out, just to make everybody aware of that again, to correct some numbers that were associated in there, and you also have a copy of the 2018 to 2027 capital improvement program summary as well. So looking for your consideration of the resolution that would adopt the 2018 total budget and the 2018-2027 capital improvement plan.
Anyone have any questions for Ken? I know we've probably gone over these numbers a few times already in the last few months, but again, I think Mike and his staff should be congratulated on putting a very cost-effective budget together. I think with the growth of the city and to keep the numbers as tight as we did, I think that's a good job, so congratulations to Mike and the department heads. Without any other comments?
I have one.
Okay.
I just have a quick question, Ken. Where did, initially, we were talking to 2.3% increase, and then at the last meeting, it turned to 3.49% increase. Where was that additional?
No, I think the levy is still 2.3.
Still 2.3.
Correct.
Yeah, but the 3.49 had to do with, what was the proper term that Mike used?
I should have asked at the last, at that last meeting.
Right, but the levy is.
When I first saw it.
Right, the levy is still.
Just refer to that back page, this 3.49.
Some of the initial info, and maybe Mike didn't have it, is, really, the question's answered, the mayor answered the question of the levy stayed at 2.3.
Yes, the levy stayed at 2.3, that 3. has to do with, and I can't think of a special, it feels the tax rate, you know, from the 60, 61% to 60.
4%.
You know, the change in the tax.
I think it was, that was what we were allowed on the, what is that, tax gap?
Well, we did 4.23% in September.
You couldn't go above.
Couldn't go above that, but then we got done with, the actual levy was 2.3%, but then the 3. some percent has to do with, like, not the change in tax capacity, but I cannot think of the exact words that Mike.
Then I'll get that answered, right?
Yeah.
My real question was that the levy hadn't changed, but.
No, the levy has not changed, it's still the 2.3%, which we're approving and which will then go to, I assume, the county?
Yeah, then we have to certify the levy.
Right.
Once approved, which is the next agenda.
Okay, anyone else have any other questions regarding that? Okay, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the 2000 total budget and the 2018 and 2027 capital improvement plan.
I'll second.
Got a second by Maggie Bass. Any other questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Now we can get to the certifying the levy here.
All right, so as you see on this one, as Sean mentioned, this is maintaining, as has been discussed, the total levy of $4,089,000. It's broken up into 70/4% for the general fund levy at $3,039,000, $1 million for debt service at 25%, and then the $50,000 EDA levy, which is about 1% of the budget. So again, that is an increase of $92,000 over the 2017 payable property tax levy, or a 2.3% increase, as has been talked about. And then, again, the summary is attached to the memo here for the changes within the tax levy for 2018, and again, this would require review and approval of the resolution that is attached to the packet as well. But again, a lot of these materials are what had been looked at at the truth in taxation hearing on December 4th, so.
Any questions? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the tax levy?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion by Dave Brusick, second by Sean Ryan. There's no other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Approval compensation plan. I assume this is just approving the steps and the 3% based on the budget?
Correct, it follows the discussion we had before, I'm not funding my own, there you go. Yeah, so basically, as has been included in the budget, you have the 3% cost of living adjustment for the 2018 budget, and as far as that is basically matching the labor agreement we have with the law enforcement unit, union, and that had the 3% wage adjustment for 2018, so trying to be consistent between the union officers and the rest of the city staff, that's where that 3% number came from. You can see kind of the historical adjustments in 2015, 2017, varying from 2.5% up to 2.75% in there as well, so Mike also attached the pay scale and also noting the steps that are included in there as well, should employees be eligible for that at the time of their appointment anniversary, so that will naturally have budget 2018.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Now, Ken, I don't know if you noticed, the union contract done at the end of 2018 for the police, and it has to be renegotiated?
Yeah, I think it is.
I think it is, yeah.
Okay.
We can verify that for you.
No, that's, I'm just assuming, that's just based on the three years, the last three years. Okay, any other questions?
Oh yeah, it is in the memo, 2016 to 2018.
Any other questions or comments?
I'm here.
Okay, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the compensation plan?
So move.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Maggie Bass. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Lot of yellow on this next one.
All right, so I actually put together the memo on the fee schedule item here, so a little more changes than we normally have from year to year as we look at this for getting it in place for January 1, 2018 here. We do have a couple of major changes that are included in the fee schedule, I'll just run through those quickly here, then we can kind of run through on the actual fee schedule. So big ones include building permit fee increases, planning and zoning fee increases, park facility rental fee increases, and you'll know conspicuously that ball team fees are not suggested to change at this point, but it is something that staff would like to look at in 2018. Most of these fees have not changed in over 10 years, and I think some of that will be very specific to the Memorial Park baseball field as well, electric rate increases, and then water meter cost increases. So I'm going to start specifically with the building permit fee increases, so that is essentially, and I don't have the pages numbered here, but it would be on the third page of the fee schedule draft, and really, the major change to point out, and it's really only one line item, is moving from the 1997 UBC fee schedule to Minnesota statute 326B 153, and what that does is actually moves us on to a current fee schedule that the state of Minnesota adopts and will amend from time to time. We're essentially using the 97 UBC, which is the 1997 Uniform Building Code fee schedule, so we're 20 years beyond that, and it hasn't even actively been used as a code for 15 years. We had looked at this, actually, changing this back kind of when the economy first started going south a little bit, and determined it was not the appropriate time to look at fee increases at that time, to kind of keep things moving forward, new homes getting built and other improvements being done, but we're a number of years past that again here now, and other cities have all moved on from the 97 UBC. We obviously have not to this point, but this would apply to non-flat fee permits. So on that third page of the fee schedule, you'll see a number of fees, which we are also proposing to be raised as well, but for these flat fee permits, those are just listed specifically in the schedule, so you've got reroughs, re-sides, windows, swimming pools, lower level finishes, decks, those are all flat fee permits that are not based in that fee schedule. So again, those fees haven't changed in over 10 years either, they all include a mandatory $1 state charge that we had remit to the state, goes to the building contractors recovery fund, we can't change that. So you can kind of see, all the fees have been plus up, so all the $99 fees are really $100 for what the residents pay on down the line, so you can try to make them even numbers, essentially. We compared with other cities in the area for these flat fees, we did not go above any other cities in the area, we are still very reasonable on our flat fees, so we just felt it was overdue to have that with our activity levels, it was a time to take a look at that again. Back to the UBC change to the state statute fee schedule, just to give you a perspective, generally speaking, the majority of the permits we get in would be for home remodels and new homes, so a $200,000 house is a hypothetical, this change would raise that total permit fee about $500 from what we have today, so about a 3%, 3.6% change on a $14,000 plus permit, which is kind of our typical new home permit value. So, you know, not significant, but gets us on a current fee schedule, more in line with other cities, and moves us away from that 20-year-old fee schedule, so just the right thing to do, and it will, again, the state will revise that in statutes, and if we ever feel that it's getting too high, we can certainly adjust that and adopt our own fee schedule. This one is simply one we can refer to, the fee schedule is listed right on the statute, it's just a one that they keep track of, you know, construction values, and kind of plus that up as needed. So we can still change it in the future, but it's a good benchmark for us to use for the value-based permits. Other than that, as I noted, the park rental, or right below the, or right above the building permits, have some increases for the shelter rentals, for nominal change, basically $5 more for a resident and $10 more for a non-resident. I should know, all the park fees were reviewed at the park board meeting last week at their meeting on Tuesday. meeting on Tuesday. And in addition to the shelters, there's field and shelter rental changes noted in here, and we wanted to break down on the fee schedule, noting that, you know, there's a specific charge that we're listing for the shelter and for the fields, so that everybody can see how that kind of plays out throughout the fees for residents versus non-residents for renting fields, and then also for the tournament fees. So, again, those haven't been changed for over ten years. So, it'd be all for the park rental fees. And then, I don't know, Bruce, if you want to go over specifically your water, or electric rate increases, excuse me, and water meter?
Yeah, I'll do both. In regards to the electric, or, excuse me, the water meters, we just true those up to current cost. The cost of those meters, especially the larger meters, has gone up considerably, I think primarily due to metals. They're made out of brass, so most of those, some of those have went up a little bit, especially the larger meters. And then, we also, just how metering has changed a little bit, we no longer use compound meters, so we just true up that in regards to the wording and verbiage of those. In regards to the electric rates, the KWH, the three percent rate increase was applied to the KWH rates only, and not to the base rates, so the customers will see no base rate increases, only to the KWH. And that went into all categories except for our large industrial. That was deemed by our consultant to be okay for 2018. And then, we've added a few services in regards to the very end of the page there, the last page, water flow testing services, it's just another service that we now offer. We're being asked by a lot of insurance companies and our builders to, they want proof of water flows in given areas for insurance purposes, to get their water, their ratings for their insurance due to that. And so, we have a, been putting staff towards that, instead of hiring that out, and so we put a fee in there for that. And then, we just put in our labor rates in there, we didn't have a rate in there for utility line workers, we put that rate in there, it wasn't listed before. And, oh, we put in temporary services for commercial, we just didn't have that listed before, and that's actually based on actual customer needs, whatever they're required to have our temporary service, we put it in for them, and they're billed accordingly. So, we have a rate set up for that, pretty much just the cost of the equipment, so.
Any other questions?
Sean, you had some questions that, I think it was the last meeting, how our rates were compared to other cities, I think whack and sack, or those.
That was a couple meetings ago?
Yeah. I mean, do you feel that these?
Well, I was just curious on where, I didn't do the research to find out where those fees were with the other ones, I just was relying on Ken. He just adequately explained it to me.
Okay.
Your comparison, I mean, you compared all those fees?
Yeah, and it's tough to compare whack and sack fees, because we use them at council manual for our calculations for the whack and sack. So if you go out directly and look at what, you know, let's say a Prior Lake or Shakopee is charging for a water connection unit or sanitary connection unit, you'll see a fee for what they remit to the Met Council, and then you'll see another fee that they charge locally. So it's kind of hard to get a good comparison, but, and it's been a few years since we've actually done an apples-to-apples comparison on that, just because you have so many variables on those connection fees, but we are still lower overall permit-wise, when including all the connection fees, than, you know, a Prior Lake or Shakopee, or, I can't say that for sure at this point for a Jordan or a Belt Plain, but we're very, very similar. We're not trying to be over and above what anybody else is charging, we want to keep our fees covering our costs, that's really what it comes down to, we're making sure we're covering our expenses, so that building departments for the permit fees is covering their expenses and not profiting. And as far as the connection fees, we're still covering the cost for that treatment plant, and if everybody remembers, for the sanitary sort of connection fees, we have eighty-three percent that goes to the wastewater treatment plant facility fund, and then the other seventeen percent goes to the trunk line fund, so that's kind of how that's split up as well. This is a significant fee, but those are based on the studies we've had and the financial models to back that up, so. Growth has been good, and helping the bottom line, so we shouldn't have to do any further, hopefully, rate increases in some of these different things going forward for these connection fees, but we're able to keep them where they're at. So we haven't raised our sack fee or whack fee, well, whack might have changed what may be four, five years. Four, five years ago, and sack has been close to ten, if not ten years, that has not gone up. And we'd like to keep that that way, if possible.
Okay.
I'll just make note too, I'll probably come back to the council for approval of, not rate hikes, but additional services that we're gonna offer later in the year, as we want to work with the future Minnesota Valley customers who want to take over, we're gonna offer some other programs, and they'll have rates involved with that, and we're gonna put those in places, as that works out, so. I'll come back with, for that, at a later date.
Okay. Any other questions or comments to Ken, or Bruce, or even Glenn? He's awful quiet today.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the 2018 fee schedule.
I'll make a second on that, so I get a motion by Dave Brusich, second by Chuck Nicolai. There's no other comment? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Moving right along, Bevcom.
Alright, so, to give you kind of a background overview, we had an expired contract, basically, with Bevcom for telephone services, and this proposal would replace that contract that was already being provided for the services that we have here at City Hall, but this agreement, and there was actually a proposed three-year agreement, and a proposed five-year agreement, and really what varied was the cost savings per year, or total over the three years that we could provide out of this. So we don't have any really change in what we're being provided, our phone numbers remain the same, we still have the same Bevcom as our telephone provider, we just end up getting a, as we're recommending, the five-year agreement for Bevcom with this telephone services contract, would be nearly $3,000 a year annual savings, and then just under $15,000 over that five-year time period. Don't ask me specifically about this, maybe Bruce or somebody knows more, but from the standpoint of cost savings, it is great, and we shouldn't see any big changes, but...
I worked with Kim Lee a little bit, she took care of this contract for us, but on behalf of the utility side of things, and we're pretty much, what it boils down to is, we buy a bucket of numbers that all of the city can pull out of, instead of having to each department having to decide how many numbers we need according to the call volume, we get to group that together, and if we're inundated with a bunch of calls at one time, we have that group of numbers that we can just pull out of, and then same on the outbound call. And Bevcom has worked with us to put that kind of package together, and it's worked out really well. We've kind of contemplated, you know, the ECU, POP, and all these other phone services that you can go to, but overall, Bevcom has provided us with really good service, and when we have issues with our phone systems, they're literally across the parking lot here, and so they've worked with us to put this group, or this contract together, and we feel it's a pretty good, pretty advantageous to both the city and the utilities, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, what does SIP stand for?
I knew you were gonna ask that too, and I don't know off the top of my head, but it's actually an expanded service that's coming, the way it was explained to us, it's a new service that will be out and available, and when it does, this contract, we will be able to translate into that and use that service, and not be, it won't be an added expense, so.
It's in the packet, it's a method by which phone, business phone systems can operate using an internet connection instead of a traditional phone.
I think it's somewhat like VoIP, which would be Voice Over Protocol, but I don't know, it's different.
And see, we use a voice over IP internally now, in conjunction with our city fiber system and the county fiber system, but it sounds like the phone companies themselves are gonna transition to some of that kind of technology, and we'll be able to go onboard with that with them, so that's...
Okay, any other questions?
Just one, can I assume that our attorney has looked at the arena?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. No other question?
We'll go with the five-year Bevcom contract.
Okay, I got a motion by Sean Ryan.
I'll second.
Second by Maggie Bass. There's no other comments or questions, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Passes four zero. So Ken, are you acting a gym at any too?
Uh, yeah, I'll give it a shot.
Well, you'd think Glenn would step in on one of these things.
I told you, I'm just gonna sit here in my mouth, but...
Yeah, I'll give it a shot. So, as the council knows, we have a contract jointly with Minnesota Critter Gitters and Belt Plain, Elkhood Market, Jordan, and the sewer. And the contract allows for us to have an oversight of the contract, and the cities collectively, it's not just New Prague, wanted to have the Harbor Scott Humane Society provide that oversight for the contract, basically to provide a better overall animal control service to all of our residents collectively, and really to promote animal welfare and provide basic care to the animals while they're in their health, and to make sure the kennels are in good shape at Critter Gitters. The goal is to have this oversight provided, basically through the contract that we already have, there's no financial costs, the cities for this oversight, just kind of provides somewhat of a peace of mind, and make sure that we have a good provider and good conditions at that facility. So, that is what's being recommended, to approve this memorandum of understanding, and again, no cost, just provides that oversight and a little bit of peace of mind for our services that we are collectively providing. So it's a relatively short, one-page, front to back MOU with the Harbor Scott Humane Society.
Okay.
Ken, is this oversight pretty typical amongst cities, or...
I guess I can't answer the question if it's typical or not, and I actually don't know if we've had this before, I don't know, do you guys recall?
No, I don't think we've had it.
Jim didn't mention it, we had talked about it at staff meeting last week.
I think Jim even commented that the Humane Society thought that it'd be a cool idea to possibly be a model for other cities to start, you know, kind of incorporating this into their plan, so, that's all I know about it.
Do you know if the Humane Society was the one that brought this forward?
I don't know that.
We don't know.
Kind of curious about it.
I don't know. I think it brings it on a level of protection for the animals.
Yeah, it sounds like a good deal, I just wondered.
It's kind of a no-lose situation.
Yeah, no other, rather the cost or something, that's something I guess that we looked at at that time, but, you know, no cost, we get a monthly report to all the police chiefs, and just to outline their inspection requirements, and if they're meeting those, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the MOU.
Okay, I'll make, I'll second that. So, motion by Dave Brusich, second by Chuck Nicolai. There's no other comments or questions? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay. Super Bowl.
So as Jim noted, so Club Nomadic is the, he's all worried about you mentioning Super Bowl, copyright, but it is related to a Super Bowl event going on in 2018 in Mystic Lake, a casino, they're kind of Club Nomadic, Thursday the 1st of February through Sunday, February 4th, and basically looking for cooperative agreement for public safety from the area law enforcement, including New Prague, about seeing if we have interest from officers that may be available, and it looks like four of our officers were interested in participating in the assistance during that event, and basically it's to provide control of assisting those agencies and personnels having this cooperative agreement, and kind of who does what, and if there's any liability concerns or whatnot are included in this cooperative agreement. We would be reimbursed at a premium rate for any officer's time during the event, they would be paid their hourly salaries according to the union contract, and then City of New Prague would then invoice the Prior Lake Police Department, be reimbursed at those premium rates that are agreed upon in the agreement, and then basically provide them for the assistance in this event that they're having, obviously expecting a number of people up there for that four-day event, and this would provide basically the outlines and oversight for providing those officers that were interested in working that, and then making sure that we are compensated at the amount provided for through the agreement. And I am no expert on this agreement by any means, other than glancing through it earlier, so. If you have specific questions, we could, yeah, I believe Scott Riggs did review this contract as well, and, yeah, I don't have much more to note here, but the very, page sixteen actually notes the hourly reimbursement rates, if you look in the back there, $90 per hour for the overtime rate, and then 60 per hour for the straight time rate.
So I don't know if you know the answer to this, Ken, but is this, like, are four officers that are interested in this, this is something that they would be using our equipment to, like, let's say, drive the streets of Prior Lake and handle their service there, where their police department is at the scene of the event, or is it...
I don't know the answer to that for you, definitely can find out though.
I'm sure they're asking all communities in the area to help out on that.
Right. Yeah, I apologize, I just don't know the details of the, the inner workings of that, but we can certainly let you know.
Because that would be my concern would be, is if they're using our squad cars and that stuff, you know, what's the, you know, are they handling the liability on those machines?
I know in here it said something about their personal equipment is gonna be used. I don't know about squad cars though, it didn't say. At least I didn't read it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you, David, I think it was just their own service weapon and what they carry on, their own communications devices, that sort of thing. I think the only other question that I have is that, in the event that New Prague needs police here, and we have to pull back those four interested officers, is that considered breach of contract?
Good question.
Because I'm assuming the four, you know, yeah, I understand your question, but I'm still assuming the four would be working on their off-duty.
I think so.
My understanding is that it would not affect our regularly scheduled officers for their shift in our schedule that we have, obviously through that time period, because that would affect our coverage and that, but certainly we'll verify that for you.
Yeah, this would probably be just in a situation that it was an emergency, and we just had to have...
Yeah, if we had some major catastrophe, we're just...
And there might be some, you know, I don't know if there's any language in there that you saw?
I didn't, I didn't see...
I didn't see a penalty either, I mean, if we did breach a contract and pull them back, I don't know if there was any monetary, any liability for the city where we had to pay.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be listed, because you're, we're protected under statutes or, you know, any, anyone can move forward with litigation, so this doesn't necessarily mean that it has to be identified in the contract, it would actually follow the indemnification provision of the contract, who's identifying who.
Okay. Do you know, is this something that needs to be approved today? Ken?
I do not know the answer to that, obviously the event's not taking place till everyone, but there is some pre-event training, and I don't know if that was time-sensitive or not, so I'm trying to look through here real quick.
Well, no, I mean, I guess maybe, I mean, we can approve it with the stipulation that getting the answer on, you know, if there is a catastrophe in New Prague... getting the answer on, you know, if there is a catastrophe in New Prague and, and we need to call those officers back, what is the situation with the contract?
Yeah, if appropriate.
Yeah. If that's all right with everyone.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Time is of the essence, I'm sure.
Okay, any other questions?
If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the cooperative agreement with the stipulation of just finding the answer out regarding if for some reason we are required to call our officers back into New Prague for some kind of major catastrophe or something, that would we be in breach of a contract with that?
Would you also want the answer in the event that we have to use our police cruisers?
Yes, what the equipment is.
Yeah.
Probably the liability.
Yeah, stipulating that too also, use of, is it?
City of New Prague.
Is it City of New Prague, you know, police cars being there and things like that, so.
I'll second.
Okay, got a second by Maggie Bass. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay. Consent agenda. I did note in regarding, in the approval of the agenda, I did mention that the boards and commissions basically are the current ones. I will, basically I'll email each one of you guys and make sure if you're still familiar in that before we approve. Do this. Okay? And then we'll, you know, what we got to coordinate is, is like, I know Maggie's on both park board and the joint powers with Sean, but, you know, it doesn't necessarily, you know, we could put like, you know, Maggie can be the council representative on park board if Amy wants to stick, you know, stick with planning and.
Right, and I have actually been the council rep for park board since I was appointed.
Okay.
So I'm happy to stay there.
Okay.
And as far as the joint powers, I am actually representing the park board.
Okay. So I think everyone else looks okay. If everyone's fine with that, you know, I think we'll be fine. Okay. Well, then I, the next meeting now we'll make the official thing. So if you do have any concerns, let me know or any questions, we'll give for that. That's the only thing I want to bring up on that. Any other questions or comments on anything consent agenda?
I have a couple. Ken, this one's for you. There's on the last page, top paragraph, has to do with solar, solar panels.
Compliments, Ken?
Yes.
Yeah. There are, there is a place in New Prague, excuse me, I was allergic to on Sunday, that does have solar panels on its top. Harvey Manor, you guys familiar with that one?
Uh, yeah, we actually visited there today.
Did you? Okay, got my email?
Yep.
Okay. That's, I don't need to discuss it further.
It's kind of another issue.
Is it? I know there might be a couple with that one.
Yeah, we'll fill you in on that.
Okay.
Outside of the meeting, but yeah, those were, I don't know, I guess the best way to put it would be portable solar panels on a accessory structure.
Okay.
Because it's okay to have it on someone's roof?
You can have them on the roof. Those are integral portion. Now, it's questionable, these portable ones, really should be there, not what they're being used for. That's kind of what we're looking into.
Okay.
Yeah, they're on your roof, they're integral. We don't have any prohibitions against that. It's the standalone arrays or items that we do not allow. And I don't know that we want to allow those. It's kind of an aesthetic thing and/or it can be an upkeep, keep issue as well on property.
Yeah.
Okay. You said you had another one?
I thought I did. Hold on, give me just a sec.
I have one on the books real quick.
Sure.
The trash haulers, do we have three trash haulers in town? Or do they just pay that fee? I saw ways management.
What we have, we have an interesting code for trash collection. We only allow one residential hauler for 7,500 residents. Technically speaking, we could have another residential hauler right now, that is Lakers, New Prague Sanitary. The licenses you see on here are commercial haulers that are contracted, you know, by the restaurants and the businesses and whatnot. So those are the three that have applied for licenses for the coming year. But we could have another residential hauler, but in backing up, and I'm actually on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, representing the city, and we haven't had too much info to pass along to you, but we very likely need to rewrite our code in, in full. And that will open up a whole can of worms on if we want to go to, essentially we have organized collection due to our ordinance where Lakers is essentially the only one at this point that, that can do the hauling. But we could open it up to kind of free and open market, then you could have, you know, ten haulers picking up on, you know, X number of days a week. So that's kind of a whole nother topic. But as of right now, we only have the one residential and then the three that haul commercially. So short, short answer, there's, there's, there's a lot we could do with that, I guess.
No, I'm perfectly fine with Lakers and I think their pricing structure is right in line with other communities when we've checked. So I'm very happy with them and I'd rather have just one as opposed to multiple trucks over different days and everything else running down my street. But I just, I was unaware that, I saw that, the question that I asked him, because there was two other people that had, or two other companies that had paid the fee.
Yep, just commercially.
Okay. That is something. That was all I had.
No, no. Yeah, I have another one, Ken. It has to do with Mossburg's lease agreement. It's the, I think this second last one. It says there's no, excuse me, no outside storage. Does that exclude just anybody parking, putting his tractor on the property overnight or anything like that? That's not really storage?
That's not really storage, so we don't define storage specifically in here. But if you go in our city code, like zoning ordinance, I think it's over like a 48-hour time period that it's there and it's not moving out, we consider storage.
Okay. So under those conditions, you could do something about it.
Yeah, they've been really, really good up there, these particular, this particular tenant. So there aren't many concerns about that, but yeah, if they did, we could.
Okay, I've not heard anything negative.
No, not a personal vehicle or anything. Very, very good.
Okay. Any others?
No.
Sean, anything else?
No.
Maggie, you have anything? Okay, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusich, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes four zero. Miscellaneous part, Patrick, you got anything?
Merry Christmas and happy holidays.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. Mitch, you're good? Sir, do you want to speak? Come to the podium, state your name and your address and let us know what your concerns are.
Okay, my name is Yasser Kamita. And I'm the owner of the tobacco store in town, the southwest tobacco way. And what I hear is there's a new tobacco store coming to the town where my concern about it, it's, for me, has been in the market for a while. I look at this small town as New Prague, connecting more two tobacco stores at one time in the town. So it's, there's no competition in the tobacco stores because we totally selling the state minimum of the cigarette and tobacco product. So I don't think so is going to be a good idea for me as a whole business owner, has been in the, in the town for six months, to have another tobacco store come into the store. So I just, as a person, I consider myself as a local business, considering the person who applied for the new license in town, that someone I know, he has five, six stores. So I don't consider, like, he's a chain, I would consider him, he's coming to make quick money in the town and just taking the money out of the town, considering to a local business, being in the town for six months. So I have concern about this situation.
Okay. The issue with that is really the city doesn't have really the right, based on it, to allow certain, you know, be like saying you can only have one gas station in town. So, I mean, we hear your concerns, but really we don't have any authority per se to.
Yeah, but at the same time, I also believe the city also predicting that local businesses in town, you know what I mean? So being as a local business in town, it's a new business, I invest almost, I'm going to invest almost 150,000 in the small store in town. And that's going to get affected, but being in town in six months, I don't think so. This is going to be right, in my view. I totally understand what's exactly the work in the city here, but it's just a big concern for me, just, it's not going to work out. I mean, I've been looking to different cities, different, like Apple Valley has only one tobacco store and it's, I would consider, looking at Apple Valley, comparing it to New Prague, it's four or five times of New Prague. It just, I look at it, it's going to affect me as a local business being in town. Especially we are selling, like, the product we sell in tobacco stores, being in tobacco for 60 years is totally state minimum. So there's nothing, we call competition, you know, why that bringing the business up for the town or something, it's not really going to make any difference for us. It's not going to make me, it might get me out. I was just thinking even, I don't know how to continue this year, it's going to be really hard for tobacco business. It's a statement of tobacco, total tobacco is really taxed, we hardly like, really, we work hard to make that penny, where someone else has five, six stores in Hastings, Rosment and Inver Grove and here and there, just coming to the town to affect the local business. I don't really see that's right in my eyes.
So I want to know, Yasser did come in today and raise his concerns. So I did talk to City Attorney Scott Riggs right before the meeting and indicated that in our code, it's very ministerial as far as issuing it. Basically have your background checked, pay the fee and have a location where you can run the store. And as long as that location has paid taxes, that's really the only basis of denying is any of those hadn't been met. And in the case of, of everybody on the list, they, they've met those minimums, which are not very strict minimums, but they have met those. And there's really nothing from the standpoint of our tobacco license that we can do to, you know, consider the local, the local business. We just don't have that in our code. So he advised that, you know, as everybody had, had gone through the process of checking and making the application, that, that he saw no, no reason that anybody should be denied based on the criteria in our code, so.
But we could make the code stricter, is that correct? Or?
We didn't talk in that specific of detail, whether you could limit the number and those type of things. I don't know that, but we can certainly find out. But he said it as factually based on the information that, that we're looking at here tonight and, and obviously considering the concerns of your business and, and having already had the liquor license or tobacco license from Maggie.
When I came to the town, to be honest with you, I used to drive to McKeever and one time I saw Lenz Deal, so I drove to Lenz Deal, I ended up here and it's kind of, I like the town. Even I was talking to my wife about buying a house here and it just like, I like how small and beautiful, I don't like the big cities and stuff. So I kind of really like it. I haven't been in Minnesota, I've been in Minnesota just four years, not that long, being in different places, moving to different places. It just, this town caught my eyes, I mean, and it's just like, oh, I like this place and I'm just going to come and visit. Besides the tobacco license, I have, I have a different business, I have a Metro P C S store, it's a storefront store, runs in T-Mobile, where I was just even thinking to bring another business in town and, you know, having like, you know, bringing something in the town here. And it just, when I heard about the new tobacco stores, kind of a turn off for me, just kind of, you know what, this is the first investment I'm coming to do in this town, it really just, it's not going right for me. I mean, it can really affect me from what I saw and been in the tobacco market. I kind of moved away from the cities, from Brunswick, Lafayette and all these places, coming away and far from, let's say the person who's coming to the town, I know him personally. So all these people are kind of a family and it's just like, you know what, I'm avoiding them, moving far to a small business for myself and my, I have twins, 10 months, they're 10 months. Just like, you know what, I'm just going to support my family and open my own business far from all these people and just start here. And I just found out that opening a store here is just kind of really big disappointment for me as a local business being in town just six months. I just feel like it's really hard with my experience being in tobacco market, just having two stores in an eight or nine thousand population town, it's going to be hard for me and for him, and that appears to the other side too. I think the decision is yours at the end, so.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Bruce, you got anything? Glenn?
I know we have our stakeholder meeting tomorrow at three o'clock. I'm just moving forward with the planning of the main street and looking at the design of the road, getting their input. We've had great input from them at this point. So we incorporate some of their ideas and bring back that design and then, you know, kind of let them see it on the, on the overhead or on map and things like that and just keep going forward that way. So it's been going well. So again, tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, three o'clock.
How long are you, how many times are you meeting? Is it once a month, once a quarter?
With stakeholders is every other month.
Okay.
With the functional group, which is city staff and MINDOT staff, is every other month. Our P and T meetings, which is the city staff, S E H and representative from MINDOT, that is every month. And every Monday, there's four of us that do a conference call, just to kind of talk about what we're going to do for the next meetings, where things are going, where, things like that. So we've got something going on every month, one way or another. That's all I got.
How about the baseball?
A baseball field, they've gotten some, they got the knee wall up. There's things on order that can happen yet this winter, being the tin on the roof, the windows for the press box, the doors, the fencing is up, all the new fencing down the third and first baseline. Really the stickler and if we get some nice weather, they, they say they can, they're going to try to do some concrete work or flat work, they'll call it, yet this winter. They got frost blankets down, trying to keep the frost out, so we might see that happen. I don't know a timeline of that. They're not giving me a timeline, which is, I'm sure is hard for them. So, you know, we got some of the big deals taken care of, the flat work can happen next spring. It'd be nice if it happened yet this winter. Everything else that's left can still happen. They can still work on that all winter long. The netting, the windows, the doors, things like that. And I'm sure we're going to see that happen.
Okay.
So that's what that's on.
Good. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Ken, you have anything?
Uh, no, nothing more.
Okay, Barbara, you got anything?
I do know.
Maggie?
Just a reminder, I think that the groundbreaking ceremony is tomorrow for the senior complex. That's around 3:00.
Yep, 11:30 at the site and then there's a little thing at the bank, little program or something at the bank.
First Bank and Trust.
First Bank and Trust, not the State Bank, First Bank and Trust.
Still can't get used to it.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Sean?
No.
David?
No.
I don't have anything, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn. Well, I want to wish everybody a happy Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and same to the viewing audience, on behalf of everybody here and staff.
Thank you. You're going to second that?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, seconded.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're out of here, thank you, everyone.